Yeah, we're live. Alright, for the pledge.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. All for motion to approve the agenda. I'm making motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any changes or anything? Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim is approved, approved the minutes from October twentieth.
I read through them, they look fine to me, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Uh, any more discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. So approve the claims.
I looked through them, I think the numbers I had for drainage was seven thousand five fifty-three point two five seven five five three two five. And the general is four hundred and thirty-three one oh seven point eight three. Or four three three one oh seven eight three. But you got.
Okay, uh, first, second on the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims are approved.
And one of the biggest. Benson appears to be.
Oh, he's just right there. He's just walking, yes. Which is still.
Part of its dump truck that we bought two years ago got. Put in on that batch claim still.
Alrighty, move down to the general public concerns. Uh, Danny, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Dennis Thompson, but I guess later time. More decades than I live to the cut. But anyway, retired, moved into town. Like come on, see how to get a seat. I am. Maybe given back. Yeah, so. Alright. Lots of years, so I don't. Just come in and see how it is. My wife and family is all raised here, so. Went through the school. And served on the conservation board for decades or so, so, but anyway, it's just the, just wanted to say well.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, welcome to the race.
Yeah.
Were you someone asked earlier, you guys do have an open house? Tomorrow night, I think your light is blinking down there.
It's tonight.
Good night.
Oh, it's tonight, I'm thinking.
Five or seven, is it?
Four seven.
Four to seven.
Yeah.
If you haven't seen the building, they're almost finished with their renovations, you can walk around, so it's a nice shared co-working space. There's some, there's a guy, small sewing company in there as well, so there's a lot to see in there. See if you want to just stop by and check around.
What time is that tomorrow or?
Today.
Tonight. I.
Four seven.
I was thinking it's still Sunday, I didn't.
You have moved forward.
This is a baby day for boys.
Yeah. Alrighty, any other general concerns? Seeing that, we'll move on to Allison, come up and grab a seat. See who was justice.
Morning.
Good morning.
So. Yeah, well, and, and the overall, I think a lot of people just think it's straight mental health, but what it is, is it's the reduction of, um, individuals in our jail system with mental health and substance abuse. Law enforcement calls, um, so that's why it's a justice burns grant. So it started in July and, um, I didn't think it was going to take off as much as it did, and it did. Um, I ran out of business cards, I think within the first three weeks, I saw, um, the stats, I saw thirty-three people brand new in July. I ended up seeing twenty-seven in August, uh, sixteen of those were repeat, and then I ended up seeing, uh, twenty-nine in September with sixteen of those that were already, and that doesn't mean that I just saw them one time, I might have done multiple things with them. And then additionally with phone calls, um, so for an example, Corey has kept me very busy. I guess I can get into who my referrals are from in this community, so a lot of law enforcement, that's my number one referral is. Somebody's been arrested for a domestic, I'll use an example, and they say, um, he's willing to meet with you, can you come and see him at the jail, so I get to the jail.
Is this, is this something they offer and they have to be willing?
Yeah, they have to be willing, yeah, is, is the caveat to that, and so I get a lot of calls from even parents, or like I just had an older parent that. Wanted me to work with their son, and she was all gung ho, and she made the referral, and then he's told me to basically go pound sand, so. Yeah, it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't always work out, but, so, back to that, so I ended up going to the jail meeting with this individual. I kind of let him know I was going to use him as an example, I, I just had a big status report that was due on a quarterly basis to the justice, uh, grant. I have to send in a report, and so that was just due last week, and so I used two entities, one from Pocahontas and one from Humboldt. And this individual was arrested, um, he was a methamphetamine intervenance user, so, I mean, a really pretty strong drug user, he'd been homeless for about six months. And a big old batch of bad methamphetamine came in and de bowed, and I think that was a fourteen hour day for me. I had three arrests that day in a row, they just were all being arrested from boat and getting into trouble, and, um, and so I ended up, um, going in meeting with him, he was still high at the time, but he was willing to work with me. Um, got paperwork filled out, and I got CFR to come in and do what's called an ASAM, it's a substance abuse assessment that's done in our jail. And they identified based on his level that he was a high need to go inpatient. And so, our problem was, and I think you guys kind of addressed some of the issue when you guys met with Michelle from CFR, is that we don't have money for detox anymore. And for somebody that doesn't have Medicaid, or doesn't, or isn't under a committal for detox, there is no funding for him. So unfortunately, we were not able to get him right into detox from the jail. What I had to do was I got into work, I worked with the Beacon of Hope in Fort Dodge quite a bit, and I got him down there to the Beacon of Hope. And they were able to help stabilize him for, I think we were, he was there for about a week and a half. Before CFR called and said, hey, I have a bed available, uh, in Des Moines, can you get him to Des Moines? So we got him down to Des Moines. And I went down there and I saw him twice, and he was down there for about thirty days, and we planned on a discharge plan for him to come back to the community. I did reach out to, um, to his attorney, so I worked with also their attorneys to help on figuring out what can we do with some of their charges? Can charges be reduced, can charges be changed, because sometimes certain charges on individuals prevent them then to get housing. When people run backgrounds for housing nowadays, especially low income, and they have any charges with harassment, trespassing, drug charges. Then they're not able to get housing, so it's kind of a lot of little pieces just to help this individual stabilize. So when he returned back to the community at Beacon, we had a big barrier, um, he had an individual that was already staying at the Beacon that he had previously had a no contact order with that had assaulted him. So due to his safety, he decided to return back to the boat community, which I was not as excited about, but, um, because obviously there's those temptations there. But I was able to help work with him, keep him still going to treatment, um, and got him connected with Upper Des Moines, Upper Des Moines helps fund for housing. And so he had to go get a social security card, we had to do some other things prior to being able to be eligible for that. And now that he was eligible, he just got his, um, home over in boat, and he is employed now as well. Um, so he's been clean since, I think it's August fifteenth, so. That's remarkable for somebody with substance abuse. Um, and so kind of in that report, I'll, I'll give you two examples and numbers that we use, is homelessness costs an average about forty thousand dollars a year to the community. We don't realize that, um, and that's kind of part of that report that I had due, is we have to look at those numbers, how am I cost saving our communities? And so forty thousand dollars a year, so you figure if he's, if he's not homeless just for, you know, for three, four months, that's ten thousand dollars we're saving, and you look at. Price of inpatient treatment is eleven hundred dollars a day, um. And so you do the average of not having him have to go back into inpatient treatment and savings, so I figured, we, I figured right now we're about twelve thousand dollars that we've saved, that entity within this community. I'm not including the law enforcement calls, how much it is, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for law enforcement to come out. What it costs for the jails, um, and that's what I'm just starting in this current report is getting a baseline for. How many people have been in jail this quarter, how many people will be in jail next quarter, have I had a reduction? How have I interfaced with these individuals on that intercept model? To reduce them from coming into our justice system would save us money, but then also saving money with, you know, through our hospitals, through our ERs. Through having them be homeless in the community. Um. I'll get to the next part, um, barriers, we do have some barriers, big ones here, because we don't have providers. So guess who becomes the provider too? You know, I have entities that were, are on what I call habilitation services, they're through IHH. And they're on a waitlist, and we don't have anybody that does these supported community living activities, so they would be. Taking them to get their social security card, taking them to maybe some medical appointments. Taking them to apply for housing, taking them to do those things, working with them on budgeting. We don't have individuals right now in this community that are able to provide that service. We have zero on Pocahontas, which makes it really hard over there, um, there's nobody even willing, I've talked to, um, a couple of entities, Imagine Possibilities. And Family Resource Centers to see if they would come and provide services, I even had somebody that was willing to be their staff. But what I've gotten is because the Medicaid rate is so low, they lose money on hiring those individuals when you figure in transportation and mileage. So they're just not willing to expand their programs. So I do a lot of that kind of stuff, helping them move, um, Sandy kind of lined up trying to help get somebody moved, uh. Uh, getting the football team to help to get, you know, we need people, you know, and they say, can you help me move from my third floor, well, I can't, I can't lift and do that, but. Getting people to help them, then if we're moving them and relocating them, so, um, it's a lot of really intensive. I call it strength-based case management, that's part of the model besides the intercept that I wrote when I, um, did this grant, and so. You're meeting them where their strengths are, and you're trying to help them, I'm not being prescriptive and telling them what to do as an entity, because it doesn't work. If I say, I think you shouldn't do this, Johnny, you know, Johnny only gets high maybe one day a week, that's better than five days a week, and if Johnny can get to work, then. That's helping him and that's helping the community. Um, time. You know, the guy came, or I shouldn't say the guy, but Dennis came to meet with me, he's, he's the grant entity, he came and met with me on September thirtieth, and. He said when I applied for this grant, he said I was either number one crazy, or I was going to be crazy, and I told him about really middle ground right now when it comes to it. Um, I punched out, well, I end up, our, my, my pay period goes till Saturday, and so I was at fifty-two hours last week already. Um, some weeks are ninety-six, eighty-nine, um, it's a lot of work and a lot of hours. I had three calls yesterday on a Sunday. Got two new referrals, so I've had two AM calls, um, you know. Late nights, weekends, I think the only weekend I did not do any hours was probably that first weekend with the Fourth of July weekend when. You know, it was just launching, but otherwise, yeah, it's, it's twenty-four seven and it's busy. And we do have a lot of, and I have a lot of concerns going forward with a lot of the cuts that have occurred and a lot of the changes. Um, you know, just with even our, our regional entity that we're used to being able to, I was able to fund things and do things. In my previous position, which is, you know, completely different from this. And we don't have that luxury anymore, and so. I kind of thought that that was going to be an option, so when I, this position, I thought I would refer to somebody that could do that, and we don't have that. So it becomes really, really hard and just trying to help these people out, because we don't have the funding and the resources available. So do you guys have any questions for me?
The, the scrap, or when you got us, was that a three year?
A four year.
Four year.
Yep. Yeah, I've got to try to.
I knew it was bulk four years.
They like to try to find somebody that's going into each year to have a little bit of funding into each year to try to reduce it down, is what they explained to me. Um, and so, we do have, I, I think an email got sent out, so the ASOs, which is the, the entity that took over the mental health regions. Um, I don't know for sure, I know that they know that they need providers, and so that's going to be my first connection, is trying to maintain and establish those relationships with those individuals. To see if they'd be willing to provide some funding going forward. Um, with their services, so.
This also ties in with CFR, with that money, that, um. Michelle, when she was here, or was on Zoom, requested that, to, she sent me a. Email the other day, and. We need to sign that and get it back to her, so at least we, she knows that they have the funding for that. Because that's the mon- the money she was talking about.
It flows through down to there.
Yeah, yep, that pays for your substance abuse committal, so if somebody's on a committal. Um, I, I wish, I wish I had a funding source for those that weren't on a committal, like this entity where. He doesn't have Medicaid, and so to get on Medicaid, it takes thirty days, so it's not immediate, and we have what's called presumptive Medicaid, which you can apply for, and I've gotten quite a few out of the hospital on. They, but that doesn't pay for our, our D three substance abuse funding, so that becomes an issue as well, so. That's an interesting thought.
Yes.
The other part of that is it's the same thing as the alcohol and drug addiction, that when someone seeks. Uh, is looking for help, they're willing, there's a small window in there that they're willing to.
Mm-hmm, very small window.
I'm gonna go.
Yep.
And then nope, I got a reason to get out, so then they jump and.
Yeah.
And, and you can't help somebody that doesn't want to help.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I have to say, this client I was amazed by, I did not expect that, I thought for sure down at, at, at the Beacon that he would, you know, because there's a lot of obviously substance abuse use within that. Entity, and I thought for sure that they were gonna, he was gonna regress, and he has not, so I was, and I was very, and I was very happy with CFR in, uh. Des Moines too, they did a really great job, and they communicated with me, let me know when he was coming home. We had a plan, you know, I think a lot of that is just that communication and planning.
Yeah.
I've met with quite a few entities in the community here, um, we went out to the hospital and met, obviously I've met with law enforcement. I met with the new law, um, officers last week that were hired by Jacob on the PD level, um. Heck, and from kind, uh, Unity Point Clinic, Upper Des Moines. Um, I've had, and referral sources are really interesting, I even got a referral source from the city clerk of Fonda. Had an individual who was panhandling and said, well, I know you, what you do, and so, could you maybe come and help, and so. You know, I don't have to call law enforcement and bother them, so I'll just call you, and so it was a really interesting referral that. You know, especially when I also have the, the attorneys calling, you know, your defense attorneys calling and, and asking for help, and I. I have been able to intercept on all five levels, because our first level is community, so that's prior to having any involvement with, with law enforcement, that's. My relationship with the schools or the hospitals, uh, the next level is law enforcement, which I've had, the next level is through initial appearances, which is through the attorneys. Um, the next level after that is with jails, I haven't had anybody released that to me from a prison system. And then the last level is I'm working with Lupe, who is your probation officer here in the community, to help people stay on their papers and stay out of trouble, and. So.
So are these, are these people's houses, or do you have somebody with you?
Not always, no, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm just, no. Or I take in place, I mean, like, if I go, if law enforcement calls me to, to meet. Or I take in place. I mean, like if I go, if law enforcement calls me to to meet them or go with them or with a referral, then they're already present. It depends on the, on the situation. If they're already, you know, sometimes law enforcement will go and interface with them and there's not charges, but they'll call me on the phone. Um. Aaron Bennett called me last week and said, hey, Allison, I was out and dealt with the family and they came up to the PV and here's a referral for you. So then I reached out and went ahead and met with them after that. So it just depends on kind of how they come in to the situation. But I'm not afraid of much, so there's. I I don't have that radar that says, don't do this, you know, but it just, yeah. And I I'm I'm obviously, there's certain individuals here. That I did have a referral from Cory that I said I wasn't comfortable meeting with in his home based on my conversation on the phone. And met with it, was gonna meet with him up at the PV. He didn't show up, but I, you know. Yeah, I I have a good gauge. Yes, yes, I have a good gauge of.
All these are in Humboldt County or you got, that's just, you got another chunk that's in.
Pocahontas and Humboldt Falls.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So let's just hope the ASO will see the importance of it and they'll start funding some of this stuff and getting some help also.
I mean, it's been a month or so ago that we voted to move some upgrade money to CFR. And we had to have attorney agreement with CFR or is that all been taken care of or?
I think it's on my list.
Okay, good. Perfect.
Right, any questions? Okay, well, I will see you guys next quarter. Mashenimi. Thank you.
Not quite nine o'clock is.
I'm not sure.
I'm on, I'm on Zoom here. I I'm ready anytime. I don't, whenever you guys want to.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll look for most of the going to drainage channel. The first, second, all in favor? I'll move into drainage.
Okay, morning, everybody.
Morning, Colin.
Yeah, just give us a minute. We'll have Terran come in.
Okay.
Here's coming the other door. We're all present now, Colin.
Okay, so what I've got here is a change order. Um so first off. You know, we had a, we had a design that we put out for bid with an alignment and we're kind of paralleling the old tile. But obviously. You know, I didn't know exactly down to the foot where that old tile was. So part of, part of the construction contract was to do exploratory excavation. Which Rognis came in and has done. And so then we could know exactly where that old tile is. And so then I looked back at what my design was and I actually did have to move our new tile in some cases. So part of this change order is, you know, it's the new plan sheets showing the new alignments. Uh there's some minor um modifications to the the lengths. Of different pipe sizes because we we move stuff around a little bit. So that's, that's number one uh part of this. Another part of it is uh when Rognis went out there, so that's. It's outletting into a box culvert under, I believe it's County Road N twenty-seven. Um there's, basically there's water that just stands in that box culvert. So what they did is they went. Into the ditch, uh the the DD eleven, sub one, open ditch to the north. And within six hundred feet, they were able to. You know, find that they, if they cleaned out basically the first six hundred feet, then that wouldn't be an issue. Uh and we're kind of rebuilding that box culvert and it'd be good not to have water standing in there anyways. Um so that's, that's something that we're proposing to do is to clean out the first six hundred feet of that. Uh sub one, open ditch. Uh Rognis's gave a quote for that for twenty-five hundred dollars. So what that would include is cleaning, you know, cleaning out the bottom and then. Letting the spoils dry out and then spreading those out um uh up on the bank. So there's that. And then also, this is the. Lateral four tile. It's a tile that we didn't really talk much about in the hearings, but. Just like lateral three, if you remember that, it's it's basically just the short little tile that gets us across the road. Um. And we were going to run a tile that but to the, it's further to the south from lateral three. Let's see if I got a map. Um.
Yeah, you gave us a map.
I think it's in the south. It's like in the southwest. It's about half mile down from the start.
Yep.
So that, we were gonna run a tile there to catch that water anyways. And basically, we could, if we just continue across. The road, then we would provide that one inch drainage coefficient to the west side of Hawaii Avenue. Um and so it's a lot of that, if we do this change order, eighty feet. Is in County Road right away. So that would be not directly assessed to the landowners of the district. It would go to County Secondary Roads. So it actually would be like an additional thirty-eight feet of twelve inch. Um. Pipe. So about eleven hundred dollars.
Excuse me, Colin, that's probably not correct, is it?
What's that?
Isn't this a county project? So the full project gets assessed equally over benefit? Or is this some?
No, uh, construction, constru- Right away.
They don't pay the whole cost of that lateral, do they?
No, uh, only the cost of construction in the road right away. So that that, there's, there's eighty feet right away there. So if we put, if we put a tile across the right away. The County Secondary Roads pays for the construction of that, of that tile within County Road right away. And that's with for drainage district projects, that's in um Iowa code. That secondary roads pays that. Or if it was going through a a state highway, the state, the state of Iowa would pay.
Construction costs is there, but they still pay the benefit costs for the rest of the roadway and stuff. So I know what you're talking about now.
Hey.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So that's another part of it. And just a a couple of things on that is that lateral four. According to the maps and things, that was supposed to be an eight inch. Um. Fairs who are doing some tiling on the Archer properties, they dug it up and said that it it's a seven inch, not an eight. And so it's actually smaller than what. What was stated on the maps. And with an eight inch, their target was, you know, a maximum of a half inch drainage coefficient. We're putting a one inch in as part of this project. So to me, it was made sense just to do a little bit more. And and provide an outlet, uh one inch drainage coefficient to the west side of Hawaii Avenue. And then the last thing. Oh, that's about it, I guess. So that the total increase to the contract amount with the change order would be nine thousand three hundred and fifty-seven. Dollars total. Uh of that. Let's see, four thousand four hundred and eighty would be paid by County Secondary Roads. And that's. I'm sorry, I said that wrong.
I did too.
I said that wrong before when I said eleven. Oh, it was eleven hundred dollars additional to the, to the private landowners. But almost, almost three thousand for County Secondary Roads. Plus we've got. Uh Hickinbottom intakes there. Uh so roughly half of the total contract increase amount would be paid by County Secondary Roads. And then there's that twenty-five hundred for the open ditch cleanout. And that, we'd, we'd want to be careful with that because. If you're cleaning out the open ditch, that, that twenty-five hundred dollars really should go on the assessment schedule for the open ditch. And not just um this, this tile project. So we would, we would split that out. And and everybody on the ditch would be paying for that. So there's, I guess, ten thousand dollars kind of sounds like a la- a a large increase. A direct increase for this project to the private landowners is is really around twenty-four hundred. So any questions at all or concerns, comments?
Can you go back over the outlet?
No.
What you talked about, the outlet?
Uh, yeah, so the it, the tile system outlets into a culvert. So there's a, there's kind of a head wall at the start of that box culvert. And that box culvert is got water that stands it all the time because the open ditch to the north. Is basically filled in somewhat. A cleanout. If you, if you cleaned out the first six hundred feet, then there'd be no water standing in that box culvert. And and I guess. I don't be comment, there was comments on this uh in the past about, you know, if we do this project, are we gonna need to look at? Being an open ditch cleanout as part of it. And at a minimum, we, I think we'd want to do this part of it. We could look at doing more. I really haven't done much investigation on, on the ditch itself. And I don't know when it was last cleaned out.
You know, Dave?
Years ago, probably. That's when that guy from getting in it and he bumped all our, he's bent our bank pipes over and we had to fix a lot of. About twenty years.
He thinks twenty years, Colin.
Okay. Yeah, so it's getting for a tip, an average ditch, it's getting to the time that you would typically start thinking about doing. Doing a cleanout. Um. Yeah, whether that, whether that gets investigated separately or you have a different contractor do it as part of a different. Thing or lump it in with this project, I guess that's kind of up for discussion, but. Uh at least getting that first six hundred feet. Uh cleaned out as part of this would be helpful to redoing the head wall. For the tile outlet, so they don't have water sitting there while they're trying to pour concrete and stuff. But. That's the thought behind it.
Colin, how much did you say for secondary roads?
Uh. Yeah, forty-four eighty.
I thought you said it was three, three thousand.
No, I thought he said forty-four eighty. That's why.
Uh three thousand was just for the tile. So it's, it's forty-four eighty with the tile and the new Hickinbottom intakes.
Then you got twenty-five.
Is the amount of drainage warrant switching from a seven to an eighteen, Colin?
No, not an eighteen, a twelve.
Twelve, sorry, I wrote that down.
And you're doing what, concrete from right away to right away? Is that what this eighty foot is? I guess I'm, I don't know what the right away is on Hawaii off the top of my head.
Yeah, yeah, concrete from right away to right away. The land, the drainage district is pay, is paying for.
Yeah.
Right, okay, I got that very, okay.
Okay, questions from anyone on this change order?
Got landowner, anyone else?
Dave, any comments?
I I missed the first part of this, but the change order is just for hooking the old tile for the new, correct? To making sure they're hooked together. Is that what we're?
No, no, this is lateral four with cross. Uh further north, the half, the half mile model.
Okay, all right.
The lateral four went across. And it was a seven inch, probably clay.
Yep, I know where that's at.
And they want, they want to increase it to a twelve. So they have one inch coefficient in the whole project.
And the county's been a paper.
And the secondary roads will get north or south of the grand people.
It's uh.
Yeah, it's right here.
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, sun white. And it'll go, is lateral five, what's that size?
Uh, that's a good question. Dave, you'd probably know that better than me. I think it's like a twenty-two. Does that sound right?
So that's adequate.
That's the one like the county that goes west, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good file there.
I'll make sure that everything covered.
So then why we're asking, what's lateral six?
Uh. That one goes east a little bit. And I don't know the size. Give me a little bit, I could. One thing about these is that it helps to get across the road so that people don't have to. Cross a road and somebody else is to get onto it. I know lateral six. Dave, that drains some of your land and I believe uh Mark Scow's property.
Is that the one in the middle of the south quarter that goes straight east?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, yes.
We looked into that a couple of times and it seems, but that seems to be a good tile. I do not know the size of that.
Okay.
I do not.
I'm trying to. Pull that up here.
That stops right in the vent room between uh us and Mark Scal.
Yeah.
That's a twelve inch. One thing with that is, so. It should be about a half inch drainage coefficient. It's a relatively short tile and be easier if somebody wanted to. Do something more to just do it privately and that you don't have to cross any roads or anything. So to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to to go in and do a a large upgrade of that, of that tile.
No, I'm not saying that. I just, rather than do it on another change order. After they start digging and then they find out it was a six or an eight inch. I just wondered what the size was, so.
Right, right.
So actually, this is gonna be split between secondary roads and the landowners.
Yeah.
The, the change.
Yeah.
It's been half, half.
And with this change order, we're gonna authorize Rognis to clean six hundred feet of ditch. Is that correct? What I'm understanding, yeah. So we drain the water out of that box.
Dave, do you have any concerns on that or anything?
No, I don't on that. And I talked to Colin the other day about the concerns. Has that been addressed in college?
Wait, you're talking about the, the can, interconnection between the old and the new tile?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I talked with Rognis about that. We're gonna do open, open tees.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. And the old tile, then the old clay one that we are abandoning, abandoning, that is not gonna get broke. That's correct then? It's, because those people, if it's not gonna get broke, those people on that farm are still gonna have holes that open up and it's, that tile is so bad.
So to answer that question, that clay tile. In, I guess in Archer's property, it's gonna be broke several times and basically rendered inofferable. There.
Yeah.
But.
Is it being a hundred percent rate or just randomly?
Well, oh randomly. And then they're gonna, we're gonna cut through it several times and then they're pattern tiling that and they're just gonna. They're gonna bow right through it.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh so then it'll be, it'll be their deal. So that, that is being abandoned up there.
Yes.
And County Road right away, um it's gonna get dug up and and crushed. And then further to the south, we're gonna leave it.
Yeah, because it it's, it's a good tile in our field. Cause I was there the other day when they dug them up.
Yep.
Tiles that they're there, that they dug up are both are really good tiles because we got a lot of dirt over the top of them.
Yeah, and and one thing too with that clay tile on your property is it'll be. That'll be in the middle of our, our new tile and the tile that was put in seventy-five years ago. So everything that comes to should either go into that seventy-five year old relief tile or our brand new tile. And so that clay will still drain the low spot, but it, it, if it does start going bad. It's just one tile. It's, it's not like you have to worry about all the laterals coming to it because those should be hooked into different, a different main. It's just one tile, it's, it's not like you have to worry about all the laterals coming to it, cuz those should be hooked into different, a different main.
Yeah, you should, on the GPS location, so.
Yeah, we, we'll give you shape files, Trish, we'll give you shape files, and then also the reclassification when we do that final. Step, we'll show. The tiles that are the drainage district tiles left. You know, after this project, so it won't show the old clay tile in the north part of, of this area, but it will in the, in the bottom part.
Okay.
Using it, so that's why I'm asking.
Studies talking about the, the red line.
He's talking about the red one is the one that's busted and crushed.
Right, up at the top part, but now the south part.
On the north end, but at the south end.
It's gonna stay the same.
Stay.
It's gonna stay, so that's the question, so ten years from now, it'll still be ours.
Correct.
So if it, something happens to it, we still, we, the county.
We the landowners.
Be the landowners.
Landowners.
Alright, alright, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Cause the top side, we're plugging it.
Right.
Alright. Just clarifying.
How do you identify that on the maps and stuff?
Yeah, it becomes difficult, but. That's.
We'll leave that on the engineer's shoulders.
Yeah, we have to make sure that it's identified at what point. It has been unhooked out and what is no longer.
Know that exactly on the map.
There's already an.
Yeah, you should, on the GPS location, so.
Yeah, we, we'll give you shape files, Trish, we'll give you shape files, and then also the reclassification when we do that final. Step, we'll show. The tiles that are the drainage district tiles left. You know, after this project, so it won't show the old clay tile in the north part of, of this area, but it will in the, in the bottom part.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're good with that?
I, I think so. Anybody else got any questions?
So we need a motion on the change order?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the change order that, to Colin is just.
Of nine thousand three hundred fifty seven dollars?
District eleven sub one. Yeah, so ninety three fifty seven.
I'll second that.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Okay, and that change order going across the road, I understand that, I understand what's gonna happen here. Is how far does it go? Into their field, because if we ever wanted to hook onto it. Is that possible that we could? That's county, right?
Yes, that's, that's gonna be part of the county main.
Yes, okay.
So.
We could hook on to it if we wanted to without crossing the road then, right there in the south, on the west side of the road.
Four just stops in the ditch, I think there's gonna be an intake just like up north on lateral three and four.
Well, they're gonna, yeah, is that the thing, it's gonna stop right in the edge of the right away?
Yeah, and Dave, I don't, I don't know if you would ever want to tie into that, I'd have to look at the elevations and stuff.
We have got the maiden going through our field, I understand that.
Yeah.
But is, it is in the county right away, so you could access it.
Only if it abuts his property.
It does.
All right.
It does, yeah.
I mean, you can't cross a fence line to hook into an intake in Sabres property without permission. Cause technically, we only have that ground by Eastman. So you're still going across your neighbors to not hook into their, uh, the, send the right away, I can give you.
Well, they're gonna argue with us, cuz they just took into my title on the backside, and I let them do it.
Okay. Alright. Anything else?
In the circuit then.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Change order is approved.
Right, thanks, and yeah, they, we should be, they said they were gonna get early November, so I think we're gonna. We're gonna start staking here, maybe even this week, so that pipe can start getting delivered.
Are they bringing it from here? We don't know.
I believe so, yeah.
So it shouldn't be long.
Right.
Hopefully, they look like they were, I went out by there the other day. They got quite a stock, so I wondered if they were building it up.
Um, before we move on here, on our agenda, we have it as two different action items. Of the action on a lateral four. Which we just approved the change order for, so being it's set up that way, we're gonna have, I'd like a motion to approve. The D D eleven sub on lateral four.
I'm in that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries, any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that's just clerical stuff. Alright, anything else in drainage we need to discuss?
No.
Did, uh. Travis send you those pictures from, uh, west? Of Peter, uh, that they fixed on. That's non-strips?
No.
I got some all. Give him food.
Okay.
He, they did get that fixed.
Yeah, he did tell me to get it fixed, he stopped in on Friday, so.
He just sent me the pictures I told him.
Uh, one, one day, uh, this for information, Mike and I stopped up with the county attorney on Thursday, or is it Monday? And discussed, uh, one twenty six. He still hadn't done anything, and I urged him to get that done.
Perfect.
So. Alright.
There's nothing else? I'll make a motion to go out.
Okay, we have a first and second to leave drainage, all in favor? Any opposed? We're out of drainage, we're back in session as.
Thank you.
Okay, Ben, who's up next?
One, one. I've got, uh. Application to work in the right away for, uh, Michael's Power, Inc. Uh, they are a subcontractor of Mid-American, replacing thirty two poles over on two hundred and tenth street. Uh, in the. Birch, Colorado, Delaware stretch. Um. This was Wednesday, Mike sent me a picture of a pile of rock. On the road asking if it was us, um. Or if it was a, a contractor that was working off in the distance. We didn't have a, a permit on file for, uh. Anybody to be working in the right away. Mike stopped, talked to the contractor, which turned into. I don't know, about three days worth of phone calls back and forth between Mid-American, the sub, um. I did notify the, the subcontractor that we would. Do the permit on Monday, and he'd probably be getting a, an invoice for, uh, two hundred, or seven hundred and fifty dollars. For failure to get a permit before working in the right way, so. Our penalty is two hundred and fifty dollars a day, per day, per incident. Um. He said, okay, just let me know. Basically, so, uh, talking to Mid-American. Uh, they have different policy depending on whether it's a transmission line or a feeder line on who actually gets the permit. But, uh. One of the things that's on my list for this winter is to rewrite the. Uh, work in the right away permit as well as create a utility permit, and on the utility permit, it's gonna say that the owner of the facility be the one that applies for these. Be the one that applies for these. Instead of putting it on the subs.
Yeah, cuz you could have three different subs that work on the side here, who's gonna get the permit?
Well, and as soon as the sub is done and gone and, and out of there, the line, the, the line goes back to Mid-American. So if there's any issue with it, it should fall on Mid-Am. So.
Where, off subject, but where they did have the rock piled out there, it's, it's, I think, an inch and a half or two inch. That's rough, that son of a bitch going over, it's our driveway yesterday, it's still. These be the bladed off or. Whatever cleaned up, they just smeared it to press the road.
Yeah, we notified, I notified them. Thursday, I think it was, when I went out there, did a site visit. And there were still piles out there with cones around it, and that they need to get that off the roadway. So. Um. I'll try and get a blade out there today.
Those are always gonna complain.
No.
But, so. They do have all their paperwork in line now?
Now, or, yeah, yeah, we have, we have a copy of their insurance. Uh, they filled out all the necessary paperwork.
Well, we're gonna try to get it to them by Thursday?
It's not.
We'll try to get it to them by Thursday, or we just, I'm just being smart on it. I mean, it.
Two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Thirty two poles, I would think that you would get the permits. If you're going out to fix one pole, it's one, but.
Again, I, I think it's because of. Like, I, I told Mid-Am, I'm like, I put this on them, I don't put it on the sub, and it's because Mid-Am has a separate policy depending on which type of line the person is working on. As a sub, you should just be told, here's where you're going, we've got all the permits for you.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
And this guy was goo, I mean, he was good to deal with, he said honestly, he goes, I worked for Mid-Am for twenty five years. He's like, I should have known. That this, that's why he took responsibility for it and. Is willing to pay our fines, so.
All the poles are gone except for east of Birch, there's still sawed up holes in the ditch, they haven't got cleaned up yet, and then just FYI, so you got the heads taken, but they left the poles. Across, across members.
I told them, uh, get everything off the right away, or. Close to the edge of the road that could be considered an obstruction, that can be hit.
So everything's cleaned up except for the poles on the, on the west side on Birch, the, Birch and then.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Ben. Say you have a, some, something happens and a, and a pole breaks or burns or whatever on a Saturday. Do they need to have to fix it on Saturday?
If they're replacing a single pole, we have not had them get a permit in the past.
Yeah, I was just wondering how you're gonna write that up, cuz there's emergencies that happen, like hours out, and they gotta go fix it. They're not, we're not open, they can't get a permit.
So, depending on, I mean, I know counties that don't even bring right away permits to the board supervisors. The engineer just signs and approves them and gives them like a monthly update, like here's all the.
Yeah.
Here's all the permits that we've approved. Or, I guess, like Webster, they have board meetings every two weeks, so every two weeks they update them with, here's a list of everything that we've approved.
It's Kim's.
That's the last meeting.
The engineer take care of that, right?
And, and, and honestly, I mean, if it's. If it's an emergency situation, most of the guys with Mid-Am already have my phone number, they just call and say, hey, we gotta go do some work in the area. I'll work on the permit and get it to you, can you approve it today? And, and then the board approve it at the next meeting, so.
Okay, just wondering how you handle that. Yeah.
Well, with the paperwork in place, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries on, uh. Working right away from that.
And then just to give you guys some updates, uh, Grout Scouts is in the area working, they were here. Uh, last Friday. Jetting out and, and cleaning out a couple of cross bikes. Uh, they've got two more to do today, and then they'll switch to tying and, and grouting. Um. Gage Park is still coming along, south of town. If you guys have been down there, um, just. Depending on how much rain we get tomorrow, there's a chance we can get done by the end of this week. If we get too much, it's probably gonna shut us down for a few days. Uh, ditch cleaning all throughout the county is still currently going on. Crews are. Keeping busy, I mean, uh. Between Ben and I, we've been running around staking right away while Dave's off with knee surgery, he came back today, but he's still. He's pretty much at desk duty right now, um.
Little wee. He's hoping to walk, the more he walks.
Yes, he's got a walker right now, he's hoping to get, he's hoping to get switched to a cane tomorrow. Um. But we're, we're, uh, staking a lot of right away and, and cleaning ditch. Uh, it's worked out really well where we've been able to blade the material out into the farm field. Um.
Hello, already well spent, taught her, maintain her guys, so it's not.
It really was, you know, I mean, we took him to that Brian, or we had Brian Jackson come in two years ago, I think, and teach the guys how to do that, and.
On the man, Anderson, property, how long you think that ditch reclaim will last?
Uh, I mean, it's, it's debatable, um. Farming practices are different for every, every farmer, like I, I can't speculate how long. I think. Matt sees the value of. Having positive drainage out of the field in that area, so I think it, it should last for a while.
I think a friendly reminder with a mower tractor in the summertime would refresh your memories since we're start farming the ditch at the right place.
Yep.
I mean, the, the reason that we're doing this isn't just to, to reclaim right away, I mean, it's to create. Positive drainage off the roadway and, uh, a place for.
Save the roads.
Well, a place for snow, to be stockpile, a lot of these places that were, that were digging ditch, there is no ditch. You know, so.
Me, it doesn't seem high enough. And I'm not an engineer or anything, it just.
You say the road doesn't seem high enough, or the.
Where you reclaimed it, when it comes up.
You think it should be deeper?
Yeah, it just doesn't. I don't think it's a blast, I, with, with, with his farming techniques. He already got worked around last week, and he already got pretty close to that reclaim already.
I mean, we've talked about going back out and, and putting. Uh, the steel posts with sleeves in, in those problematic areas.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea on that one.
We haven't done it, but we can look at doing it.
I could say a mower, mower tractor does a lot of good to it, it makes them mad, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in the business of trying to tick off farmers.
I, yeah.
It's, it's an unfortunate byproduct, but it's, it's not my goal.
How's your application to start interviewing?
Uh, this week, we're shooting for interviews, so we got, uh. Twenty two or twenty three applications this time around, so.
I'm just looking, it's already November, snow's done, never said about your birthday, so quickly.
Yeah, maybe good.
Where are they running out of, so.
I mean, it's gonna be the end of this month.
Sure.
You know, by the time you do interviews and, and offer a position, and then they give their current boss two weeks' notice, I mean, it's Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So.
Question on mowing the slopes in the ditches, I've had several phone calls on mowing ditches, I just. Any timeframe?
Uh.
To that?
Boat started, um. Party should be going today. I would think because the ditch that they planned on cleaning on Texas Avenue has a fiber optic line running. In the bottom of it, and it's only two and a half feet deep, so we're gonna hit it. So I met with West Calhoun last Friday, and they're gonna move it to the back of the right away. For that half a mile stretch. So I would assume that their mower is going right now, uh, Humboldt's mower is attached to. The roller down at Gage Park right now, so. Um.
Speaking of Gage Park, just another subject. Those trees. When we remove those trees.
What trees?
In front of that acreage on Gage Park Road.
I don't know, but we will.
Okay.
It's still in negotiation.
Still in negotiations.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, anyway.
I didn't know, being hauled away or.
Uh. So. When we purchased the, that particular property, at the time, the landowners didn't want us to remove the trees, they wanted us to leave them. Um, so that they could have time to plant trees behind them and grow, well then, the.
Bore.
Ash board came in and. Three years after signing that agreement, killed. Half of the trees in that front line. Um, we did approach them. Week and a half ago. And told them that obviously we didn't wanna leave them high and dry, we would remove. All of the trees that are in now our right away. But like, we're not gonna pick and choose, like, we're not just gonna take that, yeah, we're not gonna take the six dead ash trees, like, there's, there's a couple of. Probably twenty five year old volunteer, uh, evergreens that look like this coming out of the ground, like, it's not. Probably twenty-five-year-old volunteer, uh, evergreens that look like this coming out of the ground, like, it's not one base, it's like eight. That come up, um, well, we told them that if they wanted, we'd clean up all of the trees that are. In the counties now right away now, um. They weren't sure they wanted to do that. Obviously, we, we just wanna get done with the grading portion, so we said we'd just revisit it later.
Okay.
So, but that's where we're at, is all or none right now.
Yeah, alright.
Well, tomorrow's chance of rain is now a hundred percent, which is a whole half an inch. None of the seed will be done, will it?
At that stretch, no, cause we're still, still fine tuning, but. Uh. That's, uh, Gatch, uh, the ditch cleaning, like I said, still going on, uh, we did do a bunch of ditch cleaning. Up on Penn Avenue that got a few people worked up. Um, we had agreements signed by the landowner's nephew who's doing all the farming. But there was temporary amnesia of that signed agreement. Um, anyway, we.
There was a brand sun farms that.
We hauled it off. Um, it just took more time and resources to get it done, but we finished on Friday. Um. Door got paved on Thursday, the patch out there. Uh, Iowa Avenue got opened up on Tuesday, so that's back open to traffic. That's it. That was my week.
I've been going on. Alrighty, well.
Thanks.
New reports.
Alright, on Tuesday, I had my finance meeting for UDMO, um. Like I said, they. I'm not, I don't know, I'll just shut up. I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to, um, go with the. They're, they wanna make, put an offering on the building in Fort Dodge, and I'm not. With that, I said, and I'm not throwing stones at anybody, but Fort Dodge doesn't contribute a whole lot to UDMO. So why do they wanna purchase a building in? And then I evidently started to revolt because the rest of them wouldn't do it either, so I just said. We have our meeting this week, and if you can convince the rest of the board to do it, then, but to me, um. The largest contributor to UDMO and Fort Dodge comes out of their. Person population, so that's a. I'll shut up. Then we had our juvenile detention meeting on Friday, um. So this is the pack, Trish, uh, we spent three and a half hours going through. All the different handbooks and trying to get wording correct that they've been. Not been doing for evidently years. So we have twenty-eighties that are gonna come so that we can all redo that. We still have people, uh, Palo Alto resigned, they left the group. Um, they're mad.
They're gonna go west on someone?
They didn't say a whole lot, but in our bylaws, it says that. County can't leave if there's debt. Well, we damn sure have debt, we just put that new building up, so.
They'd have to pay off their portion.
Well, they, you know, that's the deal. So, anyway, all the stuff that we wrote on here and made notes will be changed according to, they have the three here, or the. Cassie is, uh, the, in charge and Justin and, and, uh. The other one are, are helping, and they are making huge. Uh, improvements down there, um, the morale, they said that the morale is a lot better, so I guess, long story short. Uh, hopefully, they're gonna start some interview processes. Unfortunately, Kyle's, well, not unfortunately, he's getting married next, is it next week? And going on his honeymoon, so. We all had to give him a bad time about that. But, um, hopefully, this will start getting.
Tried to water.
A little better in the near future, so that's all I have.
Yes, relative.
Sorry, I forgot about that. Oh, my gosh. Okay, on, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-first, I had, um, Humboldt County Prevention. And then we also had, um, food pantry, our food pantry board meeting that day also. And we, um, Alyssa was there from UDMO.
Alyssa from Fort Dodge?
Yeah, um, I mean, yeah, she'll, she'll.
Slide time.
Like, yeah, um, and according to her. Um, with the cuts and everything, they're not gonna get funding. Well, for one thing, SNAP money's not gonna come, so the food pantries are gonna be extremely, extremely busy. So we're really asking for, uh, monetary donations, um, to be made to the Humboldt County Food Pantry because. We can buy food cheaper from the, from the food bank than what you can get. Like going to Hy-Vee or, or, or Fairway, so we're really, we know there's gonna be a huge struggle. Cause what she told us too is if they had, so they have those cards, if they have something is in October that can carry over to November. That won't get done either because there's people within the system. That carry that money forward, so even if they tried to carry that money. So it won't work, so if you have SNAP, you need to make sure you use up all your October money. Um, because it's not gonna get carried forward in November like it normally is from month to month. But November, they won't be getting their, their food, so like I said, the food pantry will be busy. But she also said that they're, UDMO's gonna be losing a lot of their funding from the feds.
Well, they.
They think.
What if, I mean, that's, that was their meeting.
And that's what Alyssa said too.
If the government continues to not function, what are we gonna do? Well, we can sit here and make a. Forty-two plans, but we don't know.
But they're even talking about, but the, they're, their funding's probably gonna get cut, what, even if the government does get backed up online, their funding. Their funding's probably gonna get cut. So that falls back to the communities on. You know, again, it's gonna hurt homelessness, I mean, it could even, and winter's coming. So, there's just a lot of big, big needs, and we did make the offer to UDMO that we would become a re, we could, since. We're the only food pantry that owns the building. That we would be willing to be a regional hub for the other areas.
The other thing with that monetary donation deal is before, if, just say someone donated. A thousand dollars, they have the ability to go talk to Fairway or, uh, Roger at Hy-Vee and say, hey. Um, how much ground beef can we buy for a thousand dollars?
Right.
And most of the time, both grocery stores have been spot on saying, here, we'll sell you this at.
Right.
A good price, and they have better buys than what.
Yeah.
You and I went by, um, the hamburger.
And we do that too, like, they had a big, they had a special on, um, hamburger helper. So we just bought a bunch of hamburger helper, I mean, with what we had funds for. Cause they, they gave us, Hy-Vee gave us a really good. That's all I had last week, was those two weeks.
I had a quiet week last week, nothing.
Um, Monday, Rick and I met, went down and visited with Alyssa, on, on how TIP works and how it, uh, how it functions and who's. Set up a meeting for today, the work session for today. Uh, Wednesday, um, Cory Benz called me and said, last week, and said there was no issues, I'm back out. Our main, it does have a hole in it, so mark that, you got a hole for it, you just go back out, fix it. Um, Brendan, the Mi- Michaels, and Stone telephone poles that didn't have a burnout to be there. Zoomed a public budgeting for non-finance public official, there was a lot in that Zoom meeting, um. Budget versus annual financial report, operating environment, demographics of economy and legislative mandates. They're mandating a lot of stuff, and it's gonna keep coming to us that we gotta pay for, like you guys were just talking about, so. Just trying to see what's coming at us and how we can, uh, try and to, try to figure out how to fund some of these things that we're gonna be forced to fund. Um, went down to an economic development meeting in Fort Dodge on Thursday. Um, basically the same thing, it was, it was just going over what's coming at us and, uh. How we can go about trying to figure out how to, how to make this thing work. We're gonna be in that position for a long while, it looks like, um, and that was. Rick and I met with John on that afternoon on Thursday. Um, about some personnel issues and got things settled with them. So, that was it.
The other thing, the government is hoping that a lot of the churches in the area are gonna pick up the slack, well, just. Like everybody else's church in the county, um, everybody's struggling because you're trying to make a dollar last into five or stretch it to five. So, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Not good. I mean, I don't wanna be doom and gloom, but everybody's struggling, so.
It's gonna be doomed for what?
That's part of, we don't have any TIP projects in the county, and I'm thinking that's one way we can get some extra money to do stuff that we need to get back, and that's kinda why.
Yeah, just to explain the whole process. Okay, my turn?
Yeah.
Uh, Monday, I met with Alyssa with Mike, uh, that was after the meeting Monday. Uh, Wednesday, I had my IDDA meeting up in Esterville, um. I don't know if you guys remember those two young gentlemen that come to talk to us about an engineering firm? Well, they're pushing, uh, some of the senator to open up the, um, drainage slot, make some changes. And I'm just gonna, Jeff is on our board, that, that bill would drastically affect one of their projects up there. Where they have a, uh. Drainage district that outlets into a lake up there, I can't, I can't remember the name of the lake. And actually, two small drainage districts that out, outlet into a lake. The lake ninety years ago dumped into a stream, outletted into a stream. And went on down to, uh, which river it was. Well, seventy or ninety years ago, the farmers didn't like this little string, cause in the summertime, it was dry. But in the spring, it watered, run through, and the lake had a lot of water. Uh, so they put a tile in and created a drainage district to pay for that tile to get rid of that. Basically, it was a waterway or stream. So now, that lower drainage district wanted to make some improvements to that tile that drain took the overflow from that lake. And they wanna assess the people who dump into the lake for that cost. Where they never used to have that issue, cause the lake was a lake, a natural outlet. So this change in the drainage slot would make them annexed into the project, so they would have to contribute to it. Basically, saying that overflow water downstream, you are responsible for your overflow. When you have flooding goes. And they wanted our support on it. To talk to the senators, tell them that we're in support of it, from the IDDA. And one of the guys there said, well, it'd be like saying, well. Gulf of Mexico isn't good, so we wanna assess all the people above the Gulf of Mexico to help pay for the cleanup. Something that's been that way forever, but now we wanna change law, and that could be the outcome if you change this law. So we were in not support of it.
I was gonna say, how would that affect with the rivers and that too?
Well, yeah, you could look at the rivers.
Look at that, I mean, that would affect every. Yeah.
Yeah, almost every pond we have has a full stream.
When you get, when it rains, it goes somewhere, yes.
Oh, my gosh, that would be crazy.
Yeah, I don't think they looked at it, the big picture, they, they're looking at a little, little scope. And, uh.
Yeah, we looked at one, saw the river downstream.
So we, uh, we spent quite a bit of time talking about that. Um, and then we talked, our, uh, annual meeting is gonna be done on December fifth, um, Fort Dodge, seven spots, I'm dying. Um.
And our district meeting for here is the fourth, and that'll be over Mason City.
Oh, District Two.
Mm-hmm, District Two.
We're just, yeah. And then also, Trish, uh, we're gonna host IDDA on the twenty eighth, but here, I think that's what it says. Hopefully, that won't.
What'd you say, December? No.
January.
June.
Twenty eighth.
Okay.
Okay, that was Wednesday, uh, Thursday, um, Mike and I went up and talked to John, got some. Yeah, you know, John said he was gonna do the legal work for Linda. And they had a discrepancy, and Linda says, it's always been, it's been this way, and John says, no, it's in his opinion. There's some prey area as to how things should be done, and they were kinda doing this, but it's, so we went up, got that straightened out. Come up with the conclusion, uh, the board membership will get an email to vote electronically on. Um, and the conference board members are gonna get an email, which is school board members, mayors. Supervisors to vote on a confirmation of her appraisal. Whoever she hires for appraisal has to be confirmed by the conference board, according to John, but Linda says she's never ever done that in the past. But John wants to make sure all the eyes dotted and teacher cross, so they can't throw something out for a technicality.
That's what we went through.
Yeah.
Before with, yeah.
So, he's, he's, yeah, this, gotta make sure we do things right.
Yep.
And, um, like I said, we're talking about one twenty-six, and then we talked to John about some payroll issues. And got that all cleared up, and then Thursday afternoon, I went out and looked at some of our roadwork projects, she'll give them the clean ditch cleanouts. Mainly because of that call he got from the landowner. So they look at, that's all I had. Anything else for the board?
So, did everybody read, uh? Ordinance, ordinancees we got?
Yes.
Did you wanna talk about that, or did you run it later?
Uh, I, I think we'll talk about that in our work session, we're planning and zoning.
Alright.
Do you wanna schedule that, uh? The deal with. The letter for the request for funding for.
I think Mike put that on the board. And that is, they are requesting five hundred dollars for financial support to fight the. In Supreme Court.
Yeah, when are we gonna, um, put on the agenda for appointment for down in the recorder's office?
I think we'll put that on next week's agenda also.
Okay. John, you do have that on there?
Well, that's it. I'll make a motion to adjourn if you don't.
I think I'm done.
I'll second, sorry.
Have a first and a second anymore discussion before we adjourn? All in favor? Opposed, returned at nine forty-four. Okay, we're gonna have a work session with Ben.